Reasoning, I'm gonna, it is some, but it's also the fact of safety. You know, safety for our kids. I mean, you can see the pictures that she put up there. Anything happen where these school buses are harmed. I guess, but we need one designated area where it's gonna be safe off of the city streets. And if Mr. Amos is having an issue with the parking situation, or if it does come down to not being able to afford everything that he's having to deal with, maybe it's time to get out of the bus business and do something else with his life. There's a lot of opportunities out there in Perry County, Tel City, where he can find something else to do.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Ms. Simpson? All right, thank you. Any other comments before we move on? Okay. So Counsel, you've had the first and second reading of ordinance number 1193, both in their entirety, no changes to it. Is there a motion to suspend the rules for a third reading by title only?
So moved.
Motion made by Phillip here, second. Second by Julie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, she carried. This is the third reading of ordinance number 1193 by title only. An ordinance amending ordinance number 808 regarding the parking of certain vehicles within the city of Tel City, Indiana. So Counsel, you've had the first, second, third reading of ordinance number 1193. It is the time now, if you'd like to take action on this, to make a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Motion made by Phillip here, second. Second by Julie. Any further discussion?
I have one additional question.
Okay. It said in here, this ordinance shall be effective after its passage by the common council of the mayor. Pretty much immediately, once it's advertised.
It has to advertise it, yes.
It has to be advertised in the paper before it will go into effect.
I probably won't be able to get it into the paper. I probably won't be able to email it till Monday.
Yeah. It'd be Monday's, next Monday's edition. You think?
Yeah, I'll try.
Be close, yeah.
I'll try. If not, it'll be next Thursday's paper.
Right, not this coming.
How many days after it's published does it become law?
I think it's immediately after it's published.
The publication, I think so.
Yeah.
That's what it looks like.
Chief, I assume you're prepared to implement this?
Yeah, I spoke with Jay F. on it. Looked at the numbers as to how the county, city, and city hall, the train business, or her, I've had, I've had a comment there, so I think, I'm trying to get there, I think, we said it, I'm ready to apply it, so, please, it's going to be quick, so.
Okay, Counsel. An emotion made by Phillip, a second by Julie, we're at the discussion point. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance stands approved. All right. Next item on the agenda is trash rate discussion. So Connie and I sat down with Janet in the utility office. I don't like saying we understand it all, but we're trying to figure it out. I'm not gonna lie. You should have a copy of, do you guys have a copy of this?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody was looking at me, kinda strange, I like, did we miss something?
I'm trying to find it.
Okay. Yeah. So, this kinda gives you an idea of what we, what we have. There's some options there. If you, we have a commercial, there's a regular customer rate. What we're not looking at is the tags. So, the tag price is a dollar, it will stay at the dollar. That proposed. You guys do what you want. If you guys wanna raise it, you raise it. It's the Counsel, it's your decision. We looked at taking the regular current fee, which is $6.25, that's added to each utility bill per month, and proposed raising that by $1 to $7.25 per month, or per billing. If you look at that, you can kinda see the different, how much different revenue that will generate. And then, then you look at seven, I don't seem right. What's that, $7.25, Connie, what did do?
And then we went to $7.75.
Oh, seven, I'm sorry, I'm blind. Sorry. $7.75, I guess either, I can't read one. And you'll see all the way, I do, that's tomorrow. You'll see that, well, that increase, how much different, more revenue that will, can generate. And then you'll see at $8. So, you've got three options there for your consideration. We can't take any action tonight on this, because it has to be put into a form of an ordinance, I believe, right Connie?
It has to be advertised in the paper, and then an ordinance will come before then, at a public, we'll have a public hearing in December at our meeting, and then they can also adopt the ordinance at that meeting, after the public hearing, at the December meeting.
Didn't we already take a $30,000 loan?
Yes, we did.
We have to pay that back.
And we need to pay that back. And so far, I haven't had enough revenue to, I'm just going from month to month, and payroll to payroll to, and I'm holding some bills out that I can put off not paying. Like reimbursing the city for all the gas that the trash department uses. I'm not, I haven't reimbursed that for a couple of months now.
And this is just because, you know, hey, we wanna make some more money in that department, just raise the bills. This is trying to cover the bills, not just get rich off it here.
How much more income, Connie, do we need to make a solvency?
Well, that's very hard to say, because everything varies and...
Approximately, but...
You know, when I'm looking at it, I, I'm looking at the, the one that we need is $7.75, that would bring in an additional little over $57,000 for the year. You know, I, I feel that would, over the years, you know, will get us, hopefully, where we would need to be.
So, to the customer, that'd be a $1.50 monthly increase? Is that what I'm thinking?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just totally opposed to raising the fee, because people pay that, whether they use the trash service or not. I think we would be better off increasing the tag cost. Number one, it would raise money for us.
Could. We talked about that, and we can try to get those numbers, I don't remember what they were off the top of my head, and I apologize.
I didn't remember what she, what you mean, I have those last numbers.
Yeah.
I think if we doubled the trash ticket from a dollar to $2, I think it would raise another $150,000 a year.
Yeah, well, I was just looking at our tag collections. In 2021, I'm showing 182,000 was collected in tag collections.
In 2021, huh?
2021, and so far, in 2020, as of October, only 144,000 had been collected this year. So, I think, it looks to me like that number's gonna be down. Because then if you go back in 2019, it was 163,000. So, it probably just varies.
It's gonna generate significantly more than any of these rates you've proposed here. Plus, there's another thing, Sarah.
Your phone.
Number one, it serves, if we, this provides no incentive to Tel City residents to recycle. None. If you have a trash tag that they have to pay for, that provides in the center, to recycle more, you have less trash, you use fewer trash tags. Okay? So it provides in the center. And then it makes people pay for the trash service, the choosing. There's another, I'll just, uh, somewhere.
I'll get you just a second.
I know, I know what it was. Remember, folks, when we were looking at these figures, we used $120,000 of ARP funds to buy the new sanitation truck. Okay? So, the deficit is more than $30,000, if it's 150,000.
You're right.
I have to buy another trash truck eventually.
Oh, you're, I'm not arguing with you, all right? I'm just trying to keep the cost down, and this is, and I know you are too. Everybody wants to see the cost as low as we can make it, and, and that's where I was just trying to, but it's up to, I, I don't have a dog in this fight. You guys get to figure it out.
Yeah, that's ours.
I could. That's true.
Well, another alternative we haven't mentioned is doing both.
Oh, I like it.
Raising, raising the, this rate up to by dollar, and increasing the, like I said, the tags to $1.50.
What is the solid waste, Gary? Is it $1.50 is what the counties are for those tags? I think it is.
Or 50.
Janet, do you know, is it $1.50 for county trash tags? I know we don't sell.
For the orange tags, right, orange?
I couldn't remember, because those were increased back in 2020, I remember. But they have not through the city.
They don't give herbicide service.
That's correct. Oh, no, you're right, I'm just trying to get an idea of cost, comparable.
The tag or without herbicide service.
Yeah, they have to take it to the solid waste place up in Cannleton to dispose of, yeah. Well, Counsel, what do you want Connie and I and Janet to do? You, you tell us.
Tell me, what is, what is your reason for not considering raising the tag instead of...
We were just trying to find a, a lower cost overall to help residents. That's kind of it, I think. Is that fair to say? You know, but Janet, I'll let you, if you come up here and speaks, please. You gotta come up here and speak, because they can't, we won't be able to hear you, and everybody's at home watching, they're gonna know who's that lady in the back talking, and no one's gonna know. You're the utility manager, you, you're the one who does the numbers all day over there, so. Thank you.
Tel City Water Department? Anyway. Every month, I have the two trash drivers bring to me untagged trash that they have to pick up. Before COVID, they even had to go through those bags and give me evidence. We run hundreds of dollars every month of untagged trash, because people are not wanting to put their tags on. If we increase this, we're going to have more trash that is thrown out even, they're gonna go through their alleys and just dump. They're not gonna, they're not gonna increase. They're not gonna pay that. If we have it on our water bill, even if they pay part of it, water is paid first, trash is paid second, and wastewater is paid third. These guys out there have to take extra care on all their untagged trash, and especially in the summer. We're getting $700 and $800 of untagged trash, at least. If we increase this...
Excuse me, $700?
Worth of untagged trash that we have to bill these people.
Monthly?
During the summer. It's a lot monthly. I, I send them, I put it on their water bill, their additional fees.
For the $700 monthly?
Right. That's during, yeah. Yeah. And we're gonna have more of that, if we increase it.
And an untagged...
The county, the county, they increase theirs, but again, they don't sell hardly any, from what Ken told me before.
So, an untagged trash is, is it, is it $5, is that correct?
It is.
So, if you set a bag out and it is not tagged, it, they normally, depends, but they typically put a note on it, and if it's there the next week, they'll pick it up, and then they'll actually charge, bill you $5.
Unless it's in the summer, and they won't let, they won't do that.
But let's think this, there, just a moment. So, let's say it's $700 a month.
That's in the summer usually, when there's more people.
You don't have to figure, or go here. So, $700 a month, that's $8,400 a year, out of 150,000, 60,000?
Last year was 182.
182,000?
Yes.
That's minuscule. Sorry. It is.
I just think you'll have a narrow look if you increase it.
She's saying if you increase it, there'll be a lot more of that, because people aren't wanting to pay $1.50, or $1.25, or $2. So, that might go up to 20,000, which costs them time, I guess, to go through it and provide evidence so you know who to charge.
Thank you, Janet. Counsel, what direction do you want to, need to let Jeff Hagarden to advertise, or Connie and, to advertise something? What direction do you all wanna go? We can make some changes to it, but we need some type of a direction. Do you wanna focus on the actual monthly fee? Or do you wanna focus on the tag part? I guess that's the question. Or do you wanna focus on both? Do you wanna raise the tag a smaller amount and raise the ba, the base fee? You can do that, too.
I think if we look at raising the tag fees, we also need to look at raising the fee that we call, charge for untagged tra, untagged trash. I mean, you know.
The only...
If we're gonna raise the tag fee, if we think that's gonna cause an issue, then we need to try to cover that, too.
Raise both, okay. The only issue, and I don't know if Janet and Pat, and I get the calls every now and then, you know, somebody, if you set a bag out, John, let me just use the example, because you kinda brought it up. You set a bag out there and you don't tag it, and then Pat picks it up, and then they, Janet sends you the $5, and you constantly, well, that wasn't my bag. Somebody else set that there. And they, like, basically dumping your trash at somebody else's property, they're saying, and I don't know if they're telling the truth or not. I wasn't there. I didn't go through their trash, and, you know, finding their name on it and stuff, you know. It's a mess, I'm not gonna lie. It's, it's a little bit of an honor system there somewhat, and sometimes people tell the truth, and sometimes people don't, you know.
Have you ever looked at privatizing the trash service?
It's been looked at. I don't know how in-depth it was looked at at one point, a few years ago. I don't think it got very far. It would take me a long, I don't say a long time, it would take me a while with what we got going on to get to that point, to look into it. Some council members would like to come up a little task force to look into that. We, we could. That won't fix the issue right for today, but it, it is something that, if the Council wants to form a little committee or whatever, to reach out to them.
One thing about that, those folks are not doing it as a nonprofit.
It may cost residents more.
Management, they're, they're, they're gonna make, they wanna make X percentage of money over their costs. We, we're just trying to make the thing pay for itself, all right? You know, pay the cost. So, from a standpoint of our citizens, we should be, they would be better off if we can continue to service as long as they're willing to pay for it, knowing if we go to a private carrier, it's gonna cost them more money.
The, the tags, I, they're kind of a love-hate thing for most people. They, they are a pain to go get, put on, and may not stick on, they may blow off, you don't put on right, whatever. Don't have any of them. I get that, but it's kind of like you pay by what you use, kinda thing. I'd hate to charge a flat fee that's $20, $15 to an elderly family or a single person that only puts maybe one bag out a week, or two bags out a month. And they're, they're paying more when someone else does it. That's the give and take of the whole tag thing. I, I see both sides of it, I, I do. A tote to put your trash in, to haul it down to the road would be so much easier, but for someone who puts one bag out a week, maybe it's not the most cost-effective for them either. So, you, you got a lot to consider. You got a lot. So, what do you wanna do, Counsel? Do you want to, what part do you want us to focus on? I don't wanna drag this out all night.
Just to get it on the table, I'll make a motion that we, we'll look at increasing the tag cost. Personally, I, I'd rather go to $2 and keep it as a flat amount, rather than having a buck and a half. And, 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 I mean, if people are already over a buck, increase. If they're already over 50 cents, increase. But anyway, I'll make a motion that we increase the trash tag price to $2 a tag.
Okay. We have a motion made by Larry. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by John. Any further discussion? And this doesn't officially adopt it, it's everybody's understands what this means. This has gotta be advertised and go, and you gotta actually take an actual ordinance...
We have to have a public hearing.
And a public hearing on it, before this happens in December. So, just to keep that in mind, I don't think it's gonna be $2 tomorrow morning and all that, so. Clarity. Motion made, second. Any other discussion?
Well, I was all for that. Janet, I feel like I would be inclined, for the people that deal with it more, to go in that direction, if she feels like it makes more sense for her department, or their department, to, you know, make a great change. I would be more inclined to do that, I guess.
Okay. Still got a motion made, seconded, so any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Or nay.
Gary, would you vote? Well, that ties it, that doesn't help me, Gary. If it ties, like, I think it dies, actually, if it ties in that way, or do I break the tie? Oh, jeez, I think I do. I would say nay at this point. So, there. I, nay. Sorry, I broke the tie, if I have to.
Larry's not getting you a Christmas present.
No, no, I'm not on his card list this year. I won't be getting a ham or anything. It's okay. So, we, we got him, Julie, do you wanna make a motion, then? To increase, or Gary, or Julie, or whoever?
Whatever it might go, but I would make a motion to raise it to, I believe Connie mentioned, $7.75, if she would be comfortable with that.
Okay. So, you have a motion made to raise it to $7.75. This is the base fee, not the tags, right? The, right? The ba, yeah, okay. All right. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Phillip. Any further discussion?
And the tag price would be only, still would be a dollar?
Yes. Motion made, second. We've finished the discussion. Hearing no more, so we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So, that carried. All right. Gary, would you vote?
I abstained.
You abstained? So, it's, it was three to four, yeah. Three to one to one. All right. Connie and I will work on getting something together for your consideration for our December 5th meeting, I think, today. All right. Whole business is done. New business. Tel City Electric, y'all wanna stay, why's everybody leaving? All right. Under new business, thank you all for attending tonight, that, if you have to leave, I understand. We appreciate it. So, under new business, Tel City Electric Department 2023 budget. Yes.
Before you go to that, just for your information, I'd just open to increase the traction, the, by 24%. So, if people hop on inflation, that contributes to...
It, it does. Yep. Okay. I'm gonna drive this for you faster than I can, so. I'm gonna drive this faster than you can.
I pay $30 just to wanna come pick up my trash, and I love it, because I don't have tags, but that's just me.
Yeah. You've got like five kids or something, don't you?
Yeah, we do some more trash than, I think, on landfill.
So, Counsel, what we're discuss, this is under new business, this is your Tel City Electric Department 2023 budget. I have an ordinance here I can read before you. Do you want me to go ahead and read the ordinance, or do you wanna ask Andy some questions? I know he'd offered the opportunity for any of you to meet with him, to discuss any questions or concerns. I don't know if any of you did. If you did, that's great, if not, that's okay, too. Any questions? 1195. And if you want me to go ahead and read it, I'll entertain a motion to have me read ordinance 1195, for its first reading. Motion made by Larry, do you hear, second?
Second.
Ooh. Who got that, John, or Julie?
Just John.
John got it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance number 1195 of the Common Counsel of the City of Tel City, Indiana, to accept and adopt the budget of the Tel City Electric Department for the fiscal period of 2023. Whereas all municipal utilities are required by the state of Indiana, presented to Indiana Code 8.1.5, 34, Section 4A, 6, to submit a budget to the municipal legislative body. Whereas the Board of Directors of the Tel City Electric Department, by Resolution Number R221018A, has adopted a budget. Whereas the Resolution of the Board of Directors for the Tel City Electric Department was presented to the Honorable Mayor and the Common Counsel for first reading, November 7, 2022. Whereas the Board of Directors of the Tel City Electric Department respectfully request that the budget be accepted and adopted as presented. Now veritore be resolved that the budget as presented by the Tel City Electric Department is hereby accepted and adopted. Be it further resolved, a copy of the budget is be placed on file in the Office of the Clerk-Treasurer of the City of Tel City and the Office of the Tel City Electric Department. Resolution of the Common Counsel of the City of Tel City in regular session, November 7, 22, approved by His Honor, the Mayor, at the time and date recorded below. Attestet Connie Berger, signed Chris Kell, Mayor. Counsel, we've had the first reading of ordinance 1195. We entertain a motion to suspend the rules for second, third reading by title only.
So moved.
Motion made by John here, second. Second by Gary. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
I just think one comment before we go. Andy, I appreciate you being honest, this budget reflects 4.12, or going into the, I think, all the Eckerdie substation, or complete...
The new substation's been built, I guess, to...
Yeah. Which is being, I'll push that along, I mean, I...
That is correct, yes, sir.
Appreciate it, man.
Yep. And, and Larry, I just wanna talk about that. Right now, we got around $6.3 million in those reserves combined. Once we spend this on the substation, this time next year, December, I project that'll be around $2.9 billion left, so. We will still have reserves there, and that'll be our goal going forward, to replenish those reserves, but that's what they're for.
Where's, where's Eckerdie?
It's down on Fourth Street, Fifth Street, between that area.
Okay.
Fifth and Tel, in the corner of the neighborhood.
My dad helped build it.
Correct.
He helped.
Get it, get it down to today.
He helped build it, I think, back then.
Yep.
That's impressive.
And old metal class systems and that, right, they're great systems. It's just they're outdated now, and you can't buy the parts. And you basically, if something goes wrong, you have to get it back to the beginning to, trying to get... But, but they're very reliable systems, but...
All right. So, motion made, seconded, discussion for a second reading by title only. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second reading, ordinance 1195 of the Common Counsel of the City of Tel City, Indiana, to accept and adopt the budget of the Tel City Electric Department for the fiscal period 2023. Third reading, ordinance 1195 of the Common Counsel of the City of Tel City, Indiana, to adopt, excuse me, to accept and adopt the budget of the Tel City Electric Department fiscal period 2023. Counsel, you've had first, second, third reading of ordinance 1195. There's no other questions, or entertain a motion to approve. Motion made by Larry here, second.
Second.
Second by Phillip. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Budget stands adopted. Thank you. Vote.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
Andy was worth it. Send her to his office.
Hey, I, I got yours taken care of pretty quick.
Right, Craig's face is probably gonna beat me, but yeah.
You, you guys did a good job putting your budget together, as you do every year. We appreciate it.
To, to give credit, that lady right there, she, she put this budget together for the baby and came back and put the final touches on it, and he had, so, couldn't do it without her.
That's great.[1660.21]
All right. Moving on, under new business, item B, transfer request. Connie, I'm going to let you talk a little bit.
I'm going to read through the resolution here on the transfers and once I get it read, if you guys have any questions, I'll point you to it in advance. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five, a resolution by the Telsity Council to base necessary transfers within classifications within several budgets. Within the general fund budget, I will transfer from computer support to the second deputy for treasurer pay and the for treasurer's budget of one thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars. Economic Development Commission Fund, transferring from EDC marketing to EDC land development, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And that's within the EDC budget. Transfer cash for the city match on community crossings grant, that will be given from the MVH fund and will be transferring from the MVH street and alley maintenance line item to the local road and bridge matching grant fund in the amount of fifty-five thousand, three seventy-one, eighty-seven. It's adopted the seventh day of November, twenty twenty-two. Council members would sign and then the mayor and I would sign.
Okay, council, resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five, they only require one reading, so if there are no questions, I entertain a motion to approve.
That is the one that we just completed with the ceiling of the streets. And I should have had this transferred to you all back and it slipped through the cracks if I didn't get it to you. So, it's just to get our share moved into the fund.
They have not, at our AIM conference last week, Kathy with NDOT made a comment that they will make that announcement December the sixth. So, about another month. It's the sixth. That's what she told me. She's like the boss lady. She's not the commissioner, but she's up there pretty high.
So, did they email that out?
No, they'll post it on their website on that day, and Janice and I will hit refresh about five hundred times. Yeah. All right. So, resolutions, like I said, only one reading, so is there, is there a motion to approve?
Make that motion.
Motion made by Gary, seconded by John. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right.
I'm passing this down for you all to sign.
Okay, additional appropriation. Yes, I'm going to make you do.
This would also, and if you have any questions, we'll take, we'll discuss it afterward. Additional appropriation resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three. Whereas it is determined that it's now necessary to appropriate, incorporate additional funds beyond those that were appropriated in the annual budget now there for section one. We are, we are ordained by the City of Telsity or Harry County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the taxing units following additional sums of money, hereby appropriated out of the fund's name and for the purposes specified, subject to laws governing the same. City General Fund, or Public Works, gasoline and oil requesting fifty thousand, CDL training requesting nine thousand, one hundred. Repair buildings, thirty thousand, for a total of eighty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars. Out of the pool budget, operating supplies, eight thousand, repair building equipment and pool, eight thousand. JFK pool, city share, fifty thousand, for a total of sixty-six thousand. Cemetery, cemetery, additional labor, five thousand dollars, more of seven thousand dollars, for a total of twelve thousand dollars. For a total of one hundred sixty-seven thousand, one hundred dollars for the general fund. Reprovision fund, city hall improvements, one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and that's the total. ARP coronavirus, ARP funding, Joe Shaker Park requested a hundred fifty thousand, camera assistance part of thirty-five thousand. Sports complex, five hundred thousand, for a total of six hundred and eighty-five thousand. Capital development, JFK pool, city share, fifty thousand, for a total of fifty thousand. Adopted the seventh day of November, twenty twenty-two, and council members would sign and the mayor and I would also be signing that. I will let you know that on the ARP funding request, that those who have given, have given a motion of intent that a committee requires this, that those would be approved at tonight's meeting.
Okay. Council, do you have any questions regarding these notice to taxpayers additional appropriations?
Can we adopt this on the City General Fund?
Yes. Around five hundred thousand probably of unappropriated funds. After this would be approved, yes.
That's kind of like our.
That's our savings.
Yeah. Not a rainy day, it's just.
Not a rainy day, no. It's the general fund that's not been appropriated.
Checking account that's sitting there.
Yeah.
How, how does the rainy day, how do we? I don't recall being on the council for almost three years now, does it ever bring any money going into the rainy day?
Correct, we have not.
How do we do that? Where do those funds?
Those funds come from the general fund, and it's ten or fifteen percent of our budget that can be moved to the rainy day fund. And I have to get, you know, I have either, I would check the state board of council or get with Jeff to have him check. No, I think there would have to be an ordinance written up in that as to what we could move.
How much, in that fund now?
Two-hundred and some thousand.
Really?
In our, in our rainy day.
I'd be, I'd, I'd be in support of that.
I, I, I can make a note and I will check on that.
Regarding that items, again, sticking with the general fund. The mower for the cemetery?
Yes.
Do they have existing funds? Any other budget to cover that?
No, they do not.
So, this is an additional.
This is an additional appropriation. And that's the same with the additional salary, then they do not have anywhere within their budget transfer.
Well, I'll just express my concern, but you can have whatever you want, but I have a little bit of a concern about spending seven thousand dollars for a mower for the cemetery. I think we wanted more maybe two years ago. I don't even know how many mowers we have, but I'm concerned about that. And I'm also concerned about, and I spoke, voted against this on the motion of intent. I'm against appropriating five hundred thousand dollars for the sports complex without having a city, what that money is going to be spent, what it's going to be used for. I have a problem with the proof, half a million dollars for sports complex and I don't know where it's going for. Baseball bases, bases, or backstops, concession stand, or rest rooms, or lighting, or what's it going to be used for?
All the above.
Pardon me?
All the above. In essence, it would, it could be, I mean.
I'm going to vote against it.
That's fine.
Larry, in response to the mower, and I'm on that cemetery committee and have been on there a number of years. I think what Al has tried to do there is, is take a mower that's got the greatest amount of use and trade that mower in on a new mower before it totally quits. We all mow grass and so forth, and we know that if, if you're mowing on a nice, level piece of ground, that mower is getting good lubrication. If you drive to our cemetery out there, much of that mowing we're doing is up and down hills. And that is the most difficult on any kind of mower. And again, we get good color and it's whatever, the good mowers with the good. But the lubrication, I think, is always a problem up and down, because at points, certain times, that mower may not be getting good lubrication. So, the mowers out there do take a pretty good beating, even though Al has went to synthetic oil in it, which again reduces the heat buildup in the motor, and he's doing everything he can to use them. But again, rather than just keep using them until they quit, then we might have to buy two or three mowers rather than one. So, that's what we're trying to do.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? If there's not, we entertain a motion to approve. Motion made by Julie here is second?
Second.
Yeah, second.
Motion to approve. Everything on this page?
Yeah.
Is that one motion just?
Yes.
So, motion made by Julie, who was seconded? Was it Phillip or?
Fairly beat.
All right. Motion by Julie, seconded by Phillip. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Motion carries. All right. Next item on the agenda, under new business, is item D. It's blight resolution, okay? Connie, what would that resolution number be? I shouldn't be able to get that off. Is it twenty-six? Is it twenty-four? Okay, because the last one was twenty-five we just did. That's why I was asking.
I might have just hit this one before I did that.
So, it's twenty-four. Okay, that's fine. So, this is resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-four. What this is, this is for the former Perry County Memorial Hospital location. As part of us applying for this grant, we have to declare that area as a blight property, okay? So, that's basically all this is doing. I don't know if you all have the copy. I've got the whole legal description, and if you want me to read it, I can. It's rather lengthy, but I can go into it, you know? Okay. So, I'm going to go ahead and start here. Blight spot declaration, uh, resolution, Telsity, Indiana, resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-four. Whereas the City of Telsity desires to eliminate blight sites and structures within the city limits, excuse me, the limits of the Telsity, Indiana. And whereas identifying such as a site is necessary for effective action to eliminate blighting conditions. Whereas the site has experienced a succession and of commercial, a cessation, session, I'll get it out eventually, of commercial use since two thousand and fifteen. And whereas the widespread deterioration of the site, commonly known as the former Perry County, former site of the Perry County Memorial Hospital, has been identified, making the site, the site structurally unsafe. Be it resolved by the Telsity, excuse, by the City Council of Telsity, that the following property located in Perry County hereby be designated as blighted property as defined in Indiana Code thirty-six dash seven dash fourteen. And you'll see the entire legal description there. And if you want me to read it, I'd be more than happy to. Passed and adopted by the City Council of Telsity, it is blanked day of twenty twenty-two. So, resolutions only require one reading. Council, do you have any questions?
I do, ma'am. And I know we're doing this because we have a grant application.
Yep.
What are, what are the legal applications for the city? If we adopt this and we do not receive.
Jeff had reviewed it and didn't make any of those comments back, so I was assuming he would. He's the one who sent a legal description, so it has been reviewed by him in his office, so I would, I would go to say that we wouldn't have any ramifications. You could always go back and pass a resolution declaring it not. I mean, but I think we all know that it is an unsafe and blighted property and, so.
A little bit concerned about what our legal operations are, if we occurred a blighted property. Does that mean that we have to take action to clean that side up with or without the grant? That's my own concern. My honor to the end, I'm trying to get some air.
Right. So, any other questions, council? Is there a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
Motion made by Phillip here is second.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Gary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right.
This also, for some reason, the way it was prepared, it is required that council signature on it.
Next, we have Brandon, who's been patiently waiting. The pickleball resurface, this is, this went before the ARP committee, and it was given a favorable recommendation of, I think, four to one, but it was, no, three to one, was given. That's for you. Recommendation to do this. So, Brandon, I'll let you kind of explain the pickleball, the cost, and the surface. Sum it up the best you can.
Essentially, the concrete pad is poured now, waiting on the post to come in. And other than that, it's playable. The lines aren't painted. We can either paint lines on the buried concrete, or we could apply a coating on it, an acrylic coating, similar to what's on the tennis court, which is what every other place that builds a pickleball court does. I did look up, it did come up in the ARP meeting, about just painting lines on it. So, I looked up several Google images of other parks, and I tried to find one that was just concrete with the lines painted on it. And I couldn't find one, so. What I'm looking to do is have tennis technologies come in sometime in the spring, because the weather has to be above fifty degrees for seven days during, uh, fourth degree, right? But we want to put the acrylic coating on the pickleball courts, and that would include the whole surface, the out of bounds area, the kitchen, as well as the playing surface and lining it. We looked at doing a cushion adoption. I had some of our local pickleballers went up to Washington, Indiana, where they have a cushion surface, which is nothing more than a couple of extra layers of paint with real small rubber particles in it. And they said for the time duration that they play in a day, it would be real beneficial. It would only help if they played, say, a tournament was held down there and they were playing several hours a day, they might notice the benefit. They also noticed that some bubbling occurred where the, when they had pickleball, where the cushion surface on those pickleball courts. And the cost was about two and a half times more to do the cushion surface, so. The non-cushion surface total is ten thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. The cushion surface was over twenty-five thousand.
Does that ten thousand include the, the lines as well?
Yes.
Did you chop around with any, or?
Yeah, and that's the cheapest, about over three thousand dollars.
This is a, what, we already?
Yeah.
Earlier, is that right?
Yeah. I, I tried to do it all at once, but we were, not, not just here, but it was trying to find comparative codes and getting what we really wanted in the end. We didn't know if we wanted cushion. We didn't know if it was that much of a benefits. It was more, so we were hoping to make sure we're asking for what we're doing.
Okay, council. So, this was the, the recommendation from the ARP committee. Again, it was a favorable recommendation, three to one on that, to proceed with this. So, is there an, I'll entertain a motion to proceed with that if the council so chooses to then.
What is the amount again?
Ten thousand, four hundred, you said?
Ten thousand, four thirty.
Yeah.
So, that's in addition to the twenty-six thousand more.
Uh, I think it's more than twenty-six, yes. It's in addition to whatever's been approved.
I don't, it might be in your minutes somewhere.
It's, it's more than twenty-six, just the concrete long is over thirty.
Oh, I guess the twenty-six was.
We approved it two different times. I think it was twenty the first time and twenty-six the second time.
May it.
For forty-six thousand.
So, this gets us to, how much?
Sixty.
Fifty-six thousand.
Fifty-six thousand.
Fifty-six thousand for a pickleball court. Fifty-nine thousand for basketball court.
Okay, council, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make it. Hello, John?
I'll have to bring this as an additional appropriation again, so it needs to be a motion of intent, that they will approve it whenever I.
That's what John tried to say. He just didn't get it out in time. John cut. Yeah, Gary and John cut you off. He, he had it.
I'm tired.
So, what, if you do the acrylic painting, if you did do that, what's the, it just would not last as long? The lines that you paint on it, the concrete would not do as well over time without the, after voting on it?
I think a lot of it's looks, but it's also safety, and it also helps the concrete last longer.
Concrete be slick when it's wet, you know?
This does have sand, so much sand per yard. It's that, uh, they put a mesh sand at a rate of fifteen pounds per gallon, and it takes point over eight gallons per square yard. So, there's quite a bit of texture in, in the surface.
Okay. So, we had a motion made by John. Was that a second out of you all, or Gary? All right. Second out of Gary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. That is all of the business on there, I believe.
By the way, pickleball is the fastest growing sport in America.
That's why Gary's going to go out and play that as soon as it gets going, aren't you and Julie?
No, I pulled a hamstring and it took seven years to get over it.
You retired early on it, didn't you?
Yeah.
There better be some people.
No, there will be. It's, it is really done a lot.
It's a good sport.
It will. It'll be.
So, I know we've got variety to get out of here, and I'm going to wrap this up fairly quick. So, under the mayor's report, we do have a couple of things. Connie and I did attend the AIM conference last week for three days. We, we learned quite a bit, actually. A lot of really good networking. Had some really good networking with some companies that can do playground equipment that could help us out at Joe Shaker Park. So, it was very beneficial, I thought. I think Connie got a lot out of it, too, being, you know, somewhat new to the clerk treasuries. It's able, gives her the opportunity to meet other clerk treasurers, so.
Networking.
It, it is. Tomorrow is election day. City Hall will be closed and city employees are off tomorrow. So, make sure you, if you have not voted early, please, please get out and vote, you know? It's not about which party at this point. It's about getting out and voting, and so please get out and do that tomorrow. Veterans Day is this Friday at noon here in City Park. We have kind of a little, small concert, if you, if you will. Come down. It's at noon, and I know there's some people at work, some don't, but we're having it at noon. There'll be hamburgers and hot dogs, I think. It's going to be sold by the Boy Scouts. Janet Damon's helping with that a lot. I think, gonna be sold by the Boy Scouts, Janet Damon's helping with that a lot, we've got, what's Marty Bryant, Marty Brown? There you go, that guy. I get it wrong every time, I'm sorry. He'll be here performing, so it'd be, it'd be really nice, so if you get a chance, come down, he'll be here between noon and 1:00, make sure you make plans for that. This, on the 10th, which is this Thursday at 4:30, Julia talked just briefly about the beautification committee, we have the Brick by Brick Committee, which is our main street group. Both those committees are kind of lacking volunteers, and that's one reason we had to cancel the chili cookoff, we just don't have enough people volunteering. People want stuff, people want things, but we need people to step up and help put these things on. So, we're gonna have a meeting at 4:30 here in this room, for anybody interested in wanting to serve on those committees, we may merge them together into one and kind of restructure it a little bit to make it more effective, so that's all gonna be discussed this Thursday at 4:30. And so, that's all I have. Anybody else have anything else?
The mayor. Did you bring up the resignation?
Yes, well, I did in the board of works, but I can also.
I didn't know if you were working.
Yeah, I'll bring it up, I don't know if any of you are aware, but the assistant chief of police did resign in, as his position, but is still with the force, the police force, so, I don't know if you all knew that yet or not, but he has resigned that role, but is still working in the, will be working in the police department, so, yeah.
May I ask everybody if we could change our time for our meetings again, from 5, the board of public works from 5 to 5:30, council water board from 6 to 6:30, and I don't think anybody had any big problem with that, so can we start doing that at our next meetings?
The, so the board of works and the, and the water board also be 6:30, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is that set by ordinance, so they'll have to?
No, it's not set by ordinance, so you're good on that.
If I like it, then I will do it.
Does it make it better for you and Phillip, I don't know what your work schedule's like when you get off and?
It does help me too, I mean, it's pushing it backward, I mean.
Okay, it's, all right.
We've moved it before.
We have, so, so starting at our next meeting, the board of works will be at 5:30, and we'll make sure we put several posts out on our social media page and the newspaper to let them know, so, and also department heads, if not, they'll just be early.
As long as we're in meetings like this.
In November.
It has started our next, it has started our November board of works meeting, the next one, coming up in two weeks. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
One is, I noticed, I don't know that you think about it, but the Tel City Christmas parade is scheduled for the same day that we're all just having their Christmas event in the old courthouse, so, exactly the same time, so.
It's unfortunate, but, I mean.
I know, but I don't know the range of those dates, but the visitor, I don't know if they're probably.
I don't think so, but, yeah. Ours has been the first Saturday for 15 years, but yeah, I appreciate it, good.
The other question I have is, is this on the, the orange trash disposal, the disposal was on?
Yes, change or not. Yes, that would go on at one of our meetings, to raise that from $10 to $12.
Yes.
Council for water works.
Board of works did.
Water works did.
Yep. It was for the, the heavy trash drop off, not pickup, but you just drop it off down there, the truckload.
It's 12 bucks.
Was 12 dollars.
40 percent.
Yeah. That was just to cover the overall cost, I, we'll probably go in the hole on that, unfortunately.
No, I don't understand.
It's unfortunate. All right, anything else? All right, intend motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Julie here, second.
Second.
Seconded by Phillip. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Needing?